Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, July the 16th. Ms. Hilbert, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Deligarza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Lofgren.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tim Young will be joining us momentarily.
Very good. Thank you. If you would please rise and join me for the pledges in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and consider it my home with which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Again, welcome, everyone. We will move straight into our communication portion of the agenda. And Mr. Farrell, how are you this evening?
I'm well. How are you, sir?
Doing well. Do you have announcements and reminders for us?
I do. I have a few. It's, you know, we're reaching the end of summer, so a lot of our departments are wrapping up a lot of the really good programs and they're getting to, beginning to begin their fall programs. So with that, we have applicant, applications for the 2024, 2025 Mayor's Youth Council. Will be open on Thursday, August 1st, and will close on Friday, August 30th. The Mayor's Youth Council is open to high school juniors and seniors who reside in Victoria County. For more details, you can visit our website, victoriatx.gov/YouthCouncil, or contact our special projects manager in our office, Keisha Smith, at 361-485-3030. From the city secretary, we are seeking applicants to serve on the Planning Commission. To apply, we have victoriatx.gov/BoardsAndCommissions, and they can fill out the application for appointment form or pick up the form at the city secretary's office located at City Hall. Tonight, you'll hear a little bit from our CVB, but the final informational workshop for applicants for hotel tax funds will be held at 700 Main, upstairs in room 205, on Monday, July 22nd. Applications for those funds are due by July 31st. Joel will tell you all this again in a little while in a much better presentation. But for more details, go to victoriatx.gov/business or contact the convention visitors, convention and visitors, convention and visitors bureau at 361-485-3117. From municipal court, similar to the hotel tax, we have our child safety grants for 2024, 2025, and they will be available, applications will be available on Monday, July 29th and close Friday, August 16th at 5:00 p.m. Information for potential applicants will be held, an informational session will be held in the municipal court chambers, this room at 107 One Lynn on Wednesday, July 31st, August 7th, and on August 14th. For more, for more details, people can visit victoriatx.gov/ChildSafetyProgram or contact Municipal Court Administrator Tiffany Toda at 361-485-3050. From our Parks Department, after a summer full of great activities, we want to invite people to join us in celebration of Parks and Recreation Month on Wednesday, July 24th at 7:00 p.m. at Riverside Stadium for Parks and Recreation Night at the Victoria Generals Game. Residents are also invited to a back-to-school bash on Friday, July 26th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Queen City Park as part of the Queen City Summer Series. The event will feature live music by Rosemarie, a bounce house, food trucks, and more. And finally, the library, again, a group that's been busy all summer long. We'd encourage people to join the Victoria Public Library in Daleon Plaza on Friday, July 26th at 2:00 p.m. for an all-ages foam party, featuring a foam cannon, dunking booth, jousting ring, door prizes, and more. Plus, the first 25 people will receive a free serving of Kona Ice. As always, special thanks to the Friends of the Library for helping fund the free fun programming all year long.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Lots going on still.
I do have, I think, one additional announcement that I almost forgot about.
Okay.
With Mr. Gill. This one's less fun.
Less fun, fair enough.
This is gonna be pretty quick. Just wanna kinda go over the, I know the citizens are wondering why we're in drought stage one, and it's raining. Just real quickly, stage one is when the river falls below normal flows based on the city of Victoria's largest water permit. And right now, in July, the river has to be above 540 CFS. That's the normal quote flow based on our permit. And I'll get into the next slide. That these are the restrictions, of course, everybody knows. It's voluntary for stage one, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. This overview of the Guadalupe River Basin. As you can see, it goes all the way up to, stretches all the way up into Kerrville area, Gonzalez, Seguin, San Marcos, New Braunfels. What goes on in this river basically is that part of the river is very, very dry. Canyon Lake is in stage three, and they're heading towards stage four, which means that that lake is getting real low. When we have water and rain and it hits Victoria area, it hits the river and it's gone quick. It disappears. We always look at forecasts of what is it doing in Gonzalez, Seguin? We look at upstream. And this shows in the, starting in June 22nd through July, the river flows. And as you'll see, in July, it dropped from 300 CFS, which is still below normal. It went all the way down to right at 160. And that's when we said, you know, we need to go ahead and get into stage one, right after barrel. I didn't wanna do it right before the hurricane. That would've been, if we had it, it would've been, people would've been like, really? Hurricane? Come on. So we waited, we hit, then we got the rain. We're blessed. We keep the rain going. But that's kind of an overview of what stage one is. Stage two is when we get below that low-flow period, which is 300 CFS. So there's, there's a fine line of stage one, stage two. And there's a lot of factors that go into how we determine, you know, which stage we wanna go into. But that's just kind of a brief overview of why we went to stage one. Yes, it's raining, and yes, the river flows are good. Keep the conservation thought process. That's what I wanna tell the public. It's, it's, consumption plays a big role in how we use our water.
Very good. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Gill. Appreciate it. Mr. Farrell, do you have any other announcements, reminders, or public and employee recognitions?
I do need to recognize two of our water and wastewater employees. They could not be here tonight because they're actually, oh, they are?
Got one, Matthew's here.
Oh, hey, Matthew's here. Great. Okay. Well, they had told me, Matthew, you were gonna be out working, and they were gonna lock you in the plant and not let you out, so I'm glad you're here. Well, so Matthew works at our surface water treatment plant. He's one of our operators, and he recently earned his Class B Surface Water Operator License from TCQ. Now, to be, to clarify that, there's D through A, and B requires several years of service plus passing a pretty difficult test. And so the fact that Matthew did it is a testament to his experience, his knowledge, his skills and ability. And we are grateful to have guys like Matthew to diagnose and correct complex problems and perform higher-level duties at our, at our Surface Water Treatment Plant. And so, you know, we can celebrate Matthew. I don't know if you wanna say anything? Now, we do have another, we do have another employee that did not escape. Okay, so he's locked in the Surface Water Treatment, in the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Cody Valley earned his Class B, again, same thing, D to, D to A, B being pretty difficult. I think it's three or five years of service, three, three years of service before they even let you take the test, and then you gotta pass it, so. But he earned his Class B Wastewater Treatment License. It's again, an events, Advanced Occupational License, certifying that he has extensive knowledge in the wastewater field, including knowledge of treatment, collection, and laboratory process, and several years of experience. I know he's not here, but maybe he's watching on TV, so we'll celebrate Cody as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Congratulations to both those gentlemen. Moving on then, items from council. Does anybody have anything? Nope. I just have one that I wanted to throw out there. I know it seems like it's been forever since the drama and, and concerns about Hurricane Burl, but this is our first meeting since then. And I just wanted to tell, just relay thanks to all the city employees who prepared and, and worked hard, late hours, overnight, you know, getting ready for that. It, it's, most people probably don't know that it virtually, it touches virtually every department within the city in terms of making preparations for a catastrophic, catastrophic event like that. And there was a lot of hours put in, and job very well done. Rick McBrayer and his team did an outstanding job, and I know we're gonna hear more about that later on in the meeting, but I just wanted to publicly say thanks to both the city and county employees, Rick and his team, for a job well done. Obviously, there was a shift. Mother Nature moved it away from us, but certainly I felt good about the preparations that were put in and, and was, was proud of the effort. So thank y'all very much.
I'll echo that. I was down there and saw the communication and the collaboration between all the entities. It was incredibly impressive. The citizens should feel really, really good knowing that we've got such professionals handling that, and we're in, we're in good hands.
Well said. All right. Any other items from council? All right, then I will move along to citizens' communication. I have a few cards here. We'll start with Ms. Catherine Olson. Good evening, Ms. Olson. Welcome back.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. Good afternoon, Mayor Crocker and City Council members. It is hard to believe that the starting pay for police officers in Victoria annually is $50,970, and firemen's starting pay is $50,412. This amount is significantly less than the surrounding areas, including Sugar Land, College Station, Bay City, and Seguin, with no change in sight. This is also the reason they cannot keep officers that get their training, then move on to better pay and more support somewhere else. I guess not having all the officer, officers budgeted for, hired, and on the job is one way to help the overall budget. Where do the leftover budgeted funds go on any given month or year? Seventeen officers short times $50,970 equals $866,490 annually. Why not bonus officers monthly for working shorthanded? At least it would help morale, which would have to be at an all-time low. I assume the answer to that idea would be no. So I will ask again, where will the excess unused budgeted salaries go? The budget is $193,485,877 in expenses. I had to practice that. Of this, $52,394,446 is personal cost, personnel cost. Capital outlay is $45,301,704. The rest, almost $96 million, is maintenance and operations. There are three different ways that have been suggested to deal with the shortfall of funds for police, which amounts to rearranging the funds without actually adding any funds, but instead borrowing from the officers' retirement funds to give a raise, as I understand it. The worst thing about this is what it says to the men and women who risk their lives, their bodies, the risk to their family unit, and on and on, are the prices they are willing to pay to protect us. Shouldn't we do better by them? The Police Department is currently seventeen officers short, and there are always, on average, four to five officers in field training, which amounts then to a 21 officer shortage. The field training takes four to five months, and there will always be more of those to come. Being a first responder in any town is a rough job. Thankfully, there are men and women willing to serve, but we can and we should do better. Obviously, our city council and city manager need a nudge to do the right thing. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Next card I have is James Collins. Welcome.
Mayor, council, how are y'all tonight?
Doing well, thanks.
City management? I'm James Collins. I'm the president of the Victoria Police Officer Association. And to this point, three pay plans have been presented to council. And the Victoria Police Officer Association would like to express support for the alternate pay plan that does not change the updated service credit. Since a change to the updated service credit affects employees very differently, the way to ensure that it does not infect, that it does not affect employees is to not change that part of our retirement plan. Additionally, we'd like to ask council and city management, as these discussions continue, to prioritize general fund resources towards pay. Depending on growth and choices, we may be able to realize a bigger compensation package for employees of the city than we see being possible today. Leaving the updated service credit alone and reprioritizing general fund dollars will allow all employees to receive a raise and receive the benefit of said raise at the end of their career. I'd like to thank council for listening and city management for being open to discussion and providing alternatives. I'm hopeful that relationships built in the past few months will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Vondero.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Michael Vondero. I live at 2204 East North Street, Lot 28. If the police officers need more money, there's plenty of overtime. They could work at Christ Kitchen and Queen City Park, you know. There's a lot of stuff going on there. Drugs, they made a fentanyl bust over in Queen City Park and Christ Kitchen. They got a mattress there with water all over. It's algae and a bicycle on top of it. And I wish code enforcement or the police could come and clean all that up. They've been issuing tickets and arresting people for violating the curfews. Are you supposed to get out of the park between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., and they still don't pay attention? And at Christ Kitchen, from 5:00 p.m. to like 7:00 a.m., you're not supposed to be there, and they're still there. And the Supreme Court just made a ruling, six to three, that gives the city and the police more rights to enforce laws and stuff like that. And I wish someone could come and clean it up. They did clean up that big pile by Christ Kitchen, you know, with a ton of junk and stuff, and the contractors did it. But I wish they could keep on doing what they're doing. I appreciate the police and their effort and stuff. There's just a lot of criminal activity at Christ Kitchen and Queen City Park. And just recently, they just made a arrest at Christ Kitchen regarding assault. And last year, there was a shooting at Christ Kitchen, and she got five years. And the high-intensity drug trafficking with troopers, the local police, and deputies, and other law enforcement, made some arrests and stuff. And I do appreciate, and the DEA did make a synthetic marijuana arrest and stuff. But I wish someone could, you know, clean that Queen City Park and Christ Kitchen up because it's really getting bad. But it is better based upon all the arrests because the police are enforcing the laws and the rules. And, you know, I wish people could tell people about the curfew. I mean, there's four big giant signs at Queen City Park. You know, you're not supposed to be there from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And last year, someone was living at Queen City Park and died and stuff. You know, I'm not saying it was, you know, like, you know, violence or something. He could've died in his sleep. Thanks, and have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Penya.
Good evening. Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city management. My name is Josue Penya, and I am the vice president of the Victoria Firefighters Association. And I'm just here to, just express some of the concerns from our association members. And I stand before you as a representative of the Victoria Firefighters Association. We would like to express our feelings on the updated service credit pay plan that has been proposed by city management. As we greatly appreciate all the hard work that they've done, we've sat with city management before and discussed this pay plan. We would like to see it go to the proposed pay plan of the 3% without having it affected the updated service credit. That's one of the ones that we are strongly for, and that would be great if we would get your support on that. Also, just a quick deal on the, on the COLA that was talked about on the last council meeting. Excuse me. We'd like to also educate ourselves a little bit more on that part. But we do know decisions have to be made, but we'd like to get a little bit more educated on those things. So we would, you know, have a better understanding on how that's gonna affect not just recently-retired members, but members that have been retired for a long time, you know. Other than that, we appreciate all your time and everything that you guys do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penya. Jennifer Perez. Good evening, Ms. Perez.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Perez, and I would like to speak on the fiscal year 2025 proposed pay program and my lack of support regarding the current structure and proposal. In the past year, the city of Victoria's assessed tax base grew by nearly 20%, so the city should have seen an increase in total property tax revenue. Values of new and existing commercial properties increased at a greater rate compared to residential properties, which is a reverse of trends from previous years. The increase in property tax values and new development gives you an opportunity to keep the tax rate the same for our residents while continuing to invest in our future without compromising the services we provide. Last year's rate should have marked the fourth year in a row that the city has either decreased the property tax rate or kept it the same. The current year's budget raised more total property taxes than last year's budget by $1.4 million, or 5.21%. And of that amount, $220,000 is tax revenue to be raised from new property values added to the tax roll last fiscal year. My challenge to you, Mayor and council members of the city of Victoria, is to reconsider options to continue to provide city services to Victoria residents that enhance the livability of our community. I ask you to reconsider potential overspending in other areas to provide a fair and much-needed raise for our local law enforcement, fire, and public works employees. I trust that you will be proactive, ethical, and effective in the days to come as you seek creative ways to show gratitude and appreciation to our current employees so the city of Victoria is seen as a place where people not only want to raise their families, but feel safe and supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And then finally, I have Karen Adamson. Good evening, Ms. Adamson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilman. My name is Karen Adamson, and I live at 604 Masters Drive here in Victoria. I'm here this evening as regent of the Guadalupe-Victoria chapter of the National Daughters of the American Revolution. On Saturday, July 4th, 2026, we will be celebrating our 250th birthday here in America. So I'm here before all of you tonight to ask you to begin planning, thinking about planning commemorative events to celebrate that year and that day so that we can commemorate and honor our revolutionary patriots as well as our American independence and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adamson. With that, then, I will close citizens' communication. We do not have any items with public hearings, and we will move straight into the consent agenda. Ms. Hilbert?
Yes, sir. Item D1 is the adoption amendments of the special work session held on June 28th, 2024, and the regular meeting held on July 2nd, 2024. Item D2 is ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances. This item is on second and third reading. Item D3 is a resolution approving the renewal of an annual supply contract with PBSDX Incorporated for liquid sulfur dioxide in an amount not to exceed $112,005. Item D4 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Charis LLC for liquid phosphate-based corrosion inhibitor in an amount not to exceed $160,500. Item D5 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Univar Solutions USA Incorporated for liquid sodium hypochlorite in an amount not to exceed $99,722. Item D6 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC for liquid ammonium sulfate in an amount not to exceed $95,858. Item D7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Texas State Library and Archives Commission for a grant award in the amount of $32,064. Item D8 is a resolution extending the terms of the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission General Assembly Representatives to August 31st, 2025, due to bylaw changes. Item D9 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Brintag Southwest Incorporated for liquid chlorine in an amount not to exceed $434,085. And item D10 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with International Dioxide Incorporated for liquid sodium chloride in an amount not to exceed $191,100.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbert. Do I have any motions with respect to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I, is there any way the public could see this? I'm, I'm about to get to that, but I need a second before I can talk about it. I've got a, I've got a motion in a second, so, and thank you, Councilwoman Lofgren, because each of us up here have a document that's a chemical cost analysis that lists the number of the different types of chemicals that the city requires every year for our water supply. I'm not gonna pretend to pronounce most of these because, but just, it, it shows price increases over the last several years, ranging from the lowest of which, I believe, on here increased 119%. And I'm looking, I think the, there's, yeah, the highest was a 293% increase. There was a 281, a 277, 159, 138. So building on my comments from the last meeting that we're seeing increases in these, I think we've seen some the last meeting that we're seeing increases in these, I think we've seen some huge increases in these supplies over the last several years and hoping that we can, we can see those heading in a more positive direction in the future. But unfortunately, it's cost of doing business at this point. So anyway, with that, then, we have a motion, a second on the consent agenda. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda passes then. Action items for council discussion. Item E1.
Item E1 is a resolution appointing a nominee to be considered by the Victoria County, excuse me, Victoria Central Appraisal District Board of Directors to fill the vacancy on the board.
Good evening, Mayor Crocker and Council. In June, the city received a letter from the Victoria Central Appraisal District concerning the resignation of Jody Sandoval from the Victoria Central Appraisal District Board. Ms. Sandoval served on the board as a representative of VISD. The unexpired term will end this year on December 31. And the process to fill a vacancy was, is outlined in the Texas Tax Code. So as a taxing entity, the city is able to submit a name of a nominee to fill the vacancy to the chief appraiser. And within 45 days, they're receiving the notification of the vacancy. So once the nominations are all submitted, then ultimately, the appraisal board is the one who votes on who gets that to fill that vacancy. So once we submit our name, as well as any other entities that choose to submit a name, they'll, the board will vote on that within, I believe, is it five days you have to have the list to the board, and then they will vote on it.
Correct. It'll be July 24.
So July 24. So, but Carrie is here as well. If y'all have any additional questions about the process or, and I just need a nomination.
Welcome, Ms. Wickler. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. So then, with respect to that nominee position, I know recently, I believe, maybe yesterday, the county nominated Dr. John McNeil, who I understand is willing to fill that position. I thought that was an excellent nomination. And so I'd throw out to the dice that I think that would be a good consideration for us. But certainly willing to hear any other potential nominees that anyone may have.
Appreciate Dr. McNeil's willingness.
As do I.
He has more hours in the day than I do. He does. Than all of us.
As I mentioned recently, if he's willing to do it, I'm willing to let him, I think. So from that standpoint, then, I guess we would need a motion on a nominee.
I'll move to recommend Dr. McNeil for that position.
I second it.
All right. I've got a motion and a second on Dr. McNeil. Any further comments or questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Congratulations, Dr. McNeil. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Item E2.
Item E2 is a resolution awarding the Tanglewood Phase One Street Reconstruction Project to Clark Construction of Texas in an amount of $7,316,069.80.
Good evening, Mr. Shablik.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we propose to recommend award of the contract for the Tanglewood subdivision Street Reconstruction Project. This project will consist of approximately 49,500 square yards of street reconstruction with 24,000 linear feet of curb and gutter replacement. There will be some minimal storm drainage improvements as part of this project. Streets that we are looking to rebuild here are Teakwood Drive, Maplewood Drive from Tanglewood to Teakwood, Sherwood Drive from Tanglewood to Teakwood, Beachwood Drive from Westwood to Maplewood, Westwood Drive from Sherwood to Maplewood, Idlewood Place, and Stonewood Place. Two bids or two proposals were received, one from Clark Construction of Texas, based out of Santa Tonda with a branch office here in Victoria, and Lester Construction Company Incorporated from Portavaca. Clark's bid was $7,316,069.80. Engineering staff recommends award of the contract to Clark Construction based upon the selection of the scoring committee. This project has a timeline of 365 days for construction. It is anticipated that they will begin in October, by the time all the contracts are prepared, executed, and such, and that then it will be completed in October of 2025. Any questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you for the information. And thank you for, I had reached out just to ask about the completion time on that. And I think that that proposed completion time you're comfortable with and feel like that that's an appropriate timeframe.
Yes. Actually, I'm hopeful that they can complete it less time. But yes, no, I don't think that's out of line.
It's a big project. It's a big project, no doubt. So, okay. Thank you for confirming that.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we adopt this item.
That's an appropriate motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right. I've got a motion and a second on item E2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. E2 passes. Thank you. That then brings us to item F, which is city manager reports. Mr. Farrell, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, so you kind of alluded to it earlier, but we're going to ask Rick McBrier and Jenna Bonda to come up and give a brief overview of how our shared city-county Office of Emergency Management works, and maybe a little insight into some of the activities we just debated in with Farrell.
Very good. Mr. McBrier, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Appreciate it. So Rick McBrier of Victoria Emergency Management. Who's controlling the slides, everyone? We got a clicker here. Okay. So thank you for the praises earlier and the recognition of how much hard work was going on during Hurricane Barrel. But without the surrounding people here up on the screen, we couldn't do it at all. The team that we have at Victor Emergency Management is one of the most outstanding teams I've ever been around. And so thank you for Jenna Bonda being the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. I'm going to turn it over to her here in a few minutes. Alex Partita, which is our Disaster Recovery Coordinator, Ralph Montez, which is our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, and Jessica Calmas, who basically keeps us grounded and rooted within our office. So when we're talking to the city manager and Assistant City Manager, they were asking us a little bit about, you know, present what we do and how we are blended in with you folks, the city and the county both. And so we'll have a couple of slides associated to that. And then we'll talk a little bit about the hurricane itself and where we're going to go to the next round. So, but thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to work alongside many of y'all. But why do we do it? And what do we do? So we're a coordinating body. Our main responsibility is to make sure that we put all the right people in the right places to make sure that everyone is talking and coordinating and communicating together. We're never in command of anything. We don't have statutory authority to do so. That falls back to the mayor and the judge themselves. But our main job is to make sure we put everybody in the one spot to where they're communicating. I think we saw that during the hurricane. I think the two or three folks that were here on city council that were in there saw that. We had a 38-page document that highlighted the extent of what we're doing. And I think we sent that to many of you there as well. So y'all can see what was actually happening because we don't want a repeat of past experiences. And we want to make sure we build upon those and improve upon them. So what do we do? We do that specifically. We coordinate. Why do we do it? There are some very specific laws that indicate why we have to do it. Homeland Security Presidential Directives 5, 7, and 8 give us our authority to do what we need to do. Way back from the days of Civil Defense Days on where emergency management was born out of is basically pull all these bodies together, and you shall do certain things. Coming from being a former police officer in the state of Kentucky, it's vastly different than being a police officer in the state of Texas, where the laws are very similar. There's a lot of things that change for you. And so how we coordinate and how we communicate amongst ourselves, these presidential directives drove out of a very specific event, September 11, that making sure that our coordinating bodies are out there, the response agencies that are there to do the job can do them effectively and together. And so these laws indicate to us the shalls, that we shall get these things done. And so we've grown out of that the last couple of years. And I'm not a big slide reader, so I'm not going to sit there and read every single word on there. But the authorities, obviously, comes down from the Robert T. Stafford Act that gives FEMA the ability to do their job. And then below that is the Texas Government Code 418 that really outlines what we do, gives the authority during a major disaster declaration or emergency to the county judge and also the mayor, sets forth a lot of things that we can do, either affecting the movement of people to the procurement and or custody of private property if we had to, which we're not going to. And I would never suggest that. It also helps us identify the emergency operations plan, puts forth a foundation in which we do our business and move forward with doing that every single day. And we do have an emergency operations plan. It's a little over 1,500 pages long with 22 annexes that go along with it. And many of the practitioners behind us sign off on those every four to five years. They have to go in and review those annexes and say, yes, this is how we're going to do our business, general guidelines on what we do. So who do we report to? So obviously, we fall to the county judge and the mayor themselves with the heavy hand being added in by the city manager and the city management team. We have an equalized budget between the two. It's approved by the county. And then what happens is at the end of the year, it gets equalized with city finance and ultimately comes to you folks for your approval. And so we get our direction, day in and day out direction from both the city manager, city management team, as well as the county judge and the mayor themselves. Most of the time, as our joke is always, that you normally don't see us unless it's gotten bad. So let's hopefully not run into each other too often. So I'm going to turn it over to Jenna for the next couple of slides, and I'll jump back in when we get into the hurricane stuff. So give her an opportunity to speak as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So kind of alluding to some of what Rick was talking about and how we conduct our business in emergency management, especially being in that unique circumstance of being in county and city joint office, is kind of what this graphic is depicting is that everything is collaborative. And I'll touch on that a little bit more in some future slides as well. But everything that we do is comprehensive. So we're not looking at those jurisdictional boundaries whenever we're going into things like responding to or preparing for Hurricane Barrel or any of the other natural man-made technological hazards that we may be susceptible to. And so looking at that, we really take that comprehensive collaboration to when we are in the emergency operations center, making sure that we're doing everything as a team, and making sure that those lines of communication remain open, that we're sharing information early and often, that we're making sure that everything is kind of ebbing and flowing together as we're going through these preparedness efforts, response, and then obviously into a recovery phase. And so as I mentioned, is through that collaborative effort, we try to take a decentralized emergency management approach. I know if you have any experience with emergency management, and like Rick mentioned, talking about those Homeland Security Presidential Directives, there's a lot of talk about incident command, incident command or in the incident command system or ICS. And we do follow that that structure, that guidance to where it does provide continuity to if we bring someone in from whether it be the city, the county, the state, federal level, or even maybe even one of our community partners, that they can get into the fold of our response in a more seamless manner. And something that we have found in our emergency management processes is to utilize more of a hybrid or department-based ICS structure to where we will maintain the roles and authorities that we need to in that ICS structure, but making sure that it's specific to that incident or that event. So we did have some of those positions in the ICS structure built out when we were preparing for Hurricane Barrel, but allowing those departments to be able to function as they do in a normal capacity because that is how they function best. And so building on those, what we like to call pre-existing social structures, to make sure that we're not reinventing the wheel because we all go through our day in and day out business on a regular basis very well. Our law enforcement and fire and EMS folks do their job day in and day out on a regular basis. So why would we want to go and reinvent the wheel to do just that? And then always making sure to prioritize working with non-traditional stakeholders. So we have our recovery process starting at the very beginning and making sure that those partners or those community partners are engaged from the very beginning because we know that that is going to be the most cumbersome phase of our emergency management approach is that recovery is to make our community members whole again, and making sure that they're staying engaged throughout the entirety of our preparedness and response. And so how can you all be engaged? Obviously, I know we have those discussions, you know, with having the judge and mayor and everyone else that may be involved, either in a decision-making process or what have you. But in addition, I know we have those fun NIMS and ICS trainings that are online that everybody loves to take so much, I know. But other trainings that are applicable to emergency operations as well, because even though sometimes they may be a little dry, they do give some context to what we do, especially when we're talking about those ICS structures and maybe how we go through a myriad of different things in the emergency management world, because there's a 300-page document that has just acronyms at the federal level. And so it can be a little daunting at times. And then, of course, the code of conduct, making sure to communicate through the city manager's office in those proper channels when it comes to those emergency operations or emergency management topics. And the biggest thing for us is we always know, we're never going to outrun social media. We're not going to be able to outrun the communication that people have. We're all inherently good at communicating for the most part, right? But making sure to share that official public information. So I know we had a very robust and strong public information team working through that preparation for Hurricane Barrel and making sure that the information that we're getting as we're going through those preparedness efforts or even into a potential response, that we're sharing official information, if it's from the National Weather Service, National Hurricane Center, or whoever it may be, to make sure to share that information regularly, knowing that you all have a very strong platform to be able to share that information. And as we're going through those responses, that that is one of our most important pieces is public information. So I'll turn it back over to Rick.
So very briefly, Jenna mentioned about the decentralized effect that we have. I think many of y'all probably saw us during COVID. You named the event. We have probably been there in the incident, COVID, river flooding, synthetic marijuana. Our whole process is to bring the coordinating bodies together, to put them into one room and start talking about the problem and figuring out how to solve it. We also then start reaching out to our external partners, the very unique external partners that we have out there from utility companies all the way down to mortuary services. We have to know enough about, just a little bit about everything to get us in trouble. And so that's what we do. So we have a lot of partnerships. And once again, you saw during the hurricane that there was a lot of response agencies that were in there. We still probably missed a few. And we're going to go back and look at that and say, okay, how do we correct those actions and improve upon what we already did. So once again, the team that's around us does a fantastic job. And as you can see, I'm never going to take the limelight for it. I want to make sure the team is recognized for the hard work that they've done. So, but one of the things that we did want to talk about was Hurricane 224 season. And so I know that the next slide over, we're obviously in it, we're in the hurricane season. We've already been shown the predictions from Colorado State University to down from the National Hurricane Center that we're going to be a more highly active season than we normally are because of the weather patterns that are out there. But it really only takes one. And we really try to focus in on that, as we saw with Hurricane Barrel recently. So it only takes that one, and that's exactly what it looks like. And we threw that in as a joke because that is exactly what the spaghetti models look like for us. And so we like to use that little slide. It gets a little laughter out of it. But it is, you know, predictive science, that the National Hurricane Center and the National Weather Service officers are trying to focus in on the best information they have. And it has improved a lot since 2008 from Hurricane Ike. Let me go back even for that. 1961 Hurricane Carla, which is the last major storm that we had come through our area, category four storm, all the way up to 2003 Hurricane Claudette, which was just a simple category one storm, moving forward to Hurricane Ike. Before that was Rita and Katrina, then Hurricane Ike. And then we fast forward for several seasons up to 2017 with Hurricane Harvey. Reminding ourselves that was an impact of a category four for Rockport. Most of Victoria received a cat one, small cat two in some pocketed areas. But the last major hurricane we had was 1961 with Hurricane Carla coming through our direct area. And so in the destruction and devastation that brought. And so we have to remind ourselves. But here's Hurricane Barrel. And so very difficult forecasting and track, as you can see. I know that Mayor and Mayor Pro Tim were there in the emergency operations center, I think by Friday, Thursday afternoon, Friday, you folks were there. And you can see the difficulty we had in trying to figure out where this thing was going to go. So Wednesday, we start watching the track modeling, the forecast, which is the probability of what we call error cone, which is that shaded area. And so we're looking at, you know, northern Mexico, southern Texas. And as it starts to shift, obviously, that brings a lot of response components and mechanisms to us. And some heavy decisions that had to be made by the policy team, which is the mayor, city manager, and the judge. And so they had to make some unique decisions based upon the information and the risk associated with that information. And those decisions for the command staff, the police chief, fire chief, ourselves, public health, public works, we have to have enough time to react to the decisions they're asking us to make and try to coordinate those bodies. So as you can see, with the hurricane there, on Wednesday, we're looking at something in South Texas. And then all of a sudden, you fast forward to Sunday, and it's almost on top of us. The next slide over, though, is important. There's the official track of it that after the hurricane. But the one on the right is at 1:50 in the morning. So in the wee hours of Jenna and I trying to grab some sleep here and there, we woke up, went in and talked to the National Weather Service meteorologist that was there at our emergency op- talked to the National Weather Service meteorologist that was there at our emergency operations center and said, can you grab me a photo of what Hurricane Barrel looks like right now? And give me the understanding of if it was to shift back to the west, what would happen to us? And so they did. And, and the indicator was fifteen miles. Fifteen miles would have put us into uh, wind speeds of over seventy-five or greater with say this figure here, Lake Texana, ten point five inches in four hours. So we could have had quite a bit of rain and a lot of wind on us within just a fifteen mile shift. Don't want to be the person crying wolf, but it's important for us to understand that the impacts that our partners to our east received, we were spared by just fifteen miles. Um, so that's important for us. As you can see, center point correction, center point energy in Houston, three point some odd million people power for five to seven days. We would be in the same situation, obviously not three point some odd people living in Victoria, but um, the impacts could have been here. So it's important for us to understand that it only takes that one. And so the track modeling is very important for us and we have to make decisions based upon the information being provided to us. And so uh, mayor, mayor pro Tim, judge, y'all did a fantastic job. You had some hard decisions to make. Um, and I think we, we as a group worked well as command staff and policymakers to make those decisions. So thank you again for that. So. Do you want to take on the decision making or take? So basically what we come down to is what we talked about, the, the sit reps. Getting all of the information in a one area so everybody can see what everybody's doing. It's so difficult when you're so moving parts. There's a lot of questions that start getting asked. What do we do with the zoo? How are we operating the safe rooms? Where do we get their food for the safe rooms? How do we get transportation? And I have to remind myself all the time and Jenna and I have to take a step back many a times and say, there's people behind us doing those jobs. And they're subject matter experts in what they do and we're gonna allow them to do it. And thank you all for giving us the the luxury and the latitude to do just that. And so the city manager, the mayor, the judge, all you folks do a great job of allowing us to, to move forward. And when we're wrong, we're gonna sit down and talk about it. But our sit rep and the coordination that we have going up to this point is crucial for us to make sure we're exchanging the information. So all of that drives what we do day in and day out. So. Do you want to talk about the written guide? I'll turn it back over to Jenna for a couple of minutes.
As I have on the slide here, uh, our office with a lot of information from either FEMA or some of our community partners from the National Weather Service or National Hurricane Center put together a hurricane and emergency preparedness guide that we encourage any community partner, whether it be in Victoria or even the surrounding region to utilize to develop a plan for their family, for their business, for their pets. Or any, any of our uh, community partners, um, to making, making sure that they have a plan. And even as Rick mentioned, is to not get into that mode of complacency, because once we start to get into that and think that all, all of the storms that we may anticipate are going to be like ones we may have seen in the past, or maybe that we were spared from like Hurricane Barrel. And making sure that we don't get into that mode of complacency, because all storms are going to have different risks, they're going to have different threats, and they're going to have different outcomes. And making sure that we're prepared. And as community partners become more prepared, that makes us as a city and a county ultimately more resilient. Um, and being part of the Texas Gulf Coast, or what a lot of folks like to call the mighty Gulf Coast, is we have to remain prepared. Um, and even though we are in some of the earlier months of hurricane season, something that is indicative of that enhanced forecast for the National Hurricane Center through this year is that Hurricane Barrel was the, the first category five hurricane in the month of July on record, or the earliest on record. Um, and so making sure to not rest on that complacency and to, to utilize the resources around you, especially like a preparedness guide. Um, so we encourage anyone that would like to utilize it, if you have the chance to scan the QR code, if not, it is at VCTX.org slash hurricane. Um, and so we definitely encourage individuals to utilize that. And last is to stay informed. County and city both use code red. Um, and so we encourage uh, individuals to sign up for emergency notifications. Um, and I know that uh, different communities use different platforms and have different ways to sign up for those notifications. Um, we are very particular about the types of messaging, so it's not going to be a a happy birthday text message at, you know, two o'clock in the morning to let you know that we were thinking about you for your birthday. It'll be something that is related to either an imminent threat or something that we really want you to pay attention to if we're sending that information out. So if um, you can is to, or if you haven't already, to sign up for that, that code red messaging by texting ALERTVICTORIA, no spaces, to nine nine four one one. Um, it'll go through, go through a series of questions to make sure that you're getting the notifications that you need. You will also be able to receive uh, the emergency alerts that you would receive on a smartphone through that same platform as well. And then to make sure to follow us on social media. Uh, I know we were utilizing that heavily throughout our preparedness for Hurricane Barrel, and we will continue to do so. And we're always pushing preparedness information for our folks in the community. And to follow us either on Facebook or X. And that's yours.
Once again, I want to echo what the, the mayor had mentioned earlier, all the city staff that are sitting out here, fantastic job. They are constantly in the mode of coordinating. We cannot do the things we do without everybody's partnership and ability to be sitting at the table to say, are we doing the right things? Are we doing the wrong things and how we improve upon them? So that was going to be the end of our report. So I think everybody else has this, but if you don't, you're able to scan me or scan Jenna, gives you our contact information, feel free to give us a call. We're usually up most of the time, twenty-four hours around the clock. But if not, feel free to give us a text or whatever else. So any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, I'll, I'll, you know, you and your team did a fantastic job. And thank y'all for what you do. Really appreciate it.
We'll continue to doing it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate it.
So the only thing I'll probably add to Rick and Jenna's presentation is they, uh, they do operate one of the best, well-organized emergency operations centers and, and uh, offices of emergency management in the state, um, and, and across the cities that I've seen. Uh, one of the biggest things, you got to see a lot of the cool stuff they do during a disaster, right? But I, I think it's important that we mention too, that they spend a lot of their time throughout the year ensuring that we have opportunities for training, like they mentioned the ICS system. And ensuring that we update our hazard mitigation plans. They help us navigate the funding mechanisms that reimburse us when we have to respond to disasters. And they do that when we're not in a disaster. And so the, the value that these folks add to our city is, is tremendous. And so we're grateful to them for that.
Appreciate it.
Very good. Thank y'all. Appreciate it so much.
All right. So next, um, we will talk about a little more fun stuff, um, and some of the activities that go on in our community. And Joel can explain how organizations in the community uh, apply for funding to help with tourism and other fantastic activities.
Good evening, Mr. Nova.
Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our hot funds awards program. I know this has been a topic that we have brought to council a couple of times in the last few years. Um, and I'm happy to say that the program has been very successful. So it's going to be more of an educational thing about, you know, that the program is continuing and for the benefit of our new council members to explain how we accept applications, how we score folks and what the criteria that, that we have developed over the last few years. So just uh, some fun facts about hot funds. Hot stands for hotel occupancy tax. It has nothing to do with the time of year. And all hotel room stays in Victoria are assessed a thirteen percent tax. Six percent of that goes to the state, seven uh, goes to the city. And per state law, they can only be used to promote tourism in the city. And the Victoria City Council determines how much to allot each year. The calculations are done by myself and the subcommittee, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But ultimately, the power lies with you guys about how much we are to allot uh, in total and to the respective organizations. So when I mentioned it can only be used for tourism, the state law actually outlines that in a couple of ways. Some of these are applicable to our hot funds awardees. A lot of them, some of them don't. Some of these aren't applicable to our hot funds awardees. They don't apply under that. One of those is convention centers and visitor, visitor information centers. So for instance, hot funds being used to help with the community center or our visitor center and the convention and visitors bureau. Expenses related to convention and meetings. Every now and then we have an applicant who applies under this provision. Advertising solicitations and proma, promotions, that's another one. The next three are very crucial because these are the meat of our applicants and our awardees. Promotion of the arts, historical restoration and preservation, and especially sporting event expenses. That is a growing one and a very successful one in far, in terms of room night generation. The last one's directional signs. Typically don't ever see anybody's awardees apply under that. That can refer to things like wayfinding signs, gateway signs. They're founded by Martin Dailyon, the big signs when you see when you come into Victoria. And then the last one is transportation of tourists. Which is a really funny one, because it actually is very specific in the language in saying that the route that the transportation on has to include a hotel. So it can't be necessarily used for Victoria Transit or anything like that. It's a really weird one. It's, it's, it's very specific. Just some things to know before I break into how, a breakdown on how we do our process. Um, the subcommittee, it is comprised of our tourism advisory board members who don't apply for hot funds. Um, I think this is a big improvement in the way that the program used to be done a few years back. When the ad hoc hot funds committee was appointed by council every summer. Um, you know, these are folks who are meeting quarterly tourism, uh, they're in the tourism industry. In some capacity, our, our tourism advisory board's broken down into thirteen spots and everybody on there is representative in some sector of the tourism industry. And those, those folks who don't apply for hot funds who are on our subcommittee usually include always our hoteliers, which are three positions on our sub, uh, board, which are very important. And then usually small business owners, things like that. It's not the folks who are on the board representing the arts and things like that, because they're usually applying for hot funds. The application, that's your documentation that the organizations will submit during this current, uh, current time period, uh, the post-event report. One thing to note, uh, for the hot funds is these folks, when the amounts are approved, they don't get to cut a check right away. They have to have their event and they have to submit their documentation. And that's very intentional, because um, if somebody decides to not have their event and we cut them a check already, we'd have to try to get that money back, right? And if they tell us, well, we already spent it, you know, what are you gonna do? Uh, so one of the things we always make very clear in our workshops is that, you know, just because you're awarded hot funds doesn't mean you're getting a check on October one, right? You gotta, you gotta make sure you've got financial solvency to have your event. And this is really just a help up, a hand, a help, a help up, not a, you know, handout. And the upcoming awards period, it coincides with our fiscal year. So it's any events uh, happening between October one, twenty twenty-four and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Here's a little bit of how the schedule's breaking down for the program. It's pretty fast and furious. Um, in June, we start communicating with potential applicants, folks who've applied before, been awarded before. The application period is, is currently open till the end of this month. You know, we have work, we have four workshops and uh, there's going to be a little bit of change. I know Derek mentioned the last one's on the twenty-second, but we're may add an extra one, because we had to unfortunately cancel the one on the eighth, because that was when Hurricane Barrel was coming. So facilities were closed. We had to cancel. We didn't know what the impact would be, so we didn't have a immediate makeup. So we might be adding an extra one and more information will go out for that. And we also plan to make the twenty-second a hybrid virtual in-person one for folks who may have just been, who are planning to maybe come. Um, I know personally a few folks from out of town who are planning to come to that eighth and then can't, couldn't come. So we're trying to be flexible as we can. We know that was definitely extenuating circumstances. After the application period closes, uh, the first few days of, uh, first part of August, uh, we'll be reviewing and scoring the applicants. And then sometime mid-August, the subcommittee will meet. That is a public meeting, publicly posted, available for the public to come um, and see the process. We will have, you know, they're always, uh, the awardees are offered to appeal or the ones who are declined award are offered to send in an appeal form, thinking they maybe disagreed about something with the process. And then we'll be coming in front of y'all, uh, beginning of September, ideally, uh, early September, uh, maybe the second weekend, second meeting in September, just depends on the subcommittee's availability. You know, last year we had to come to the second meeting, because a lot of people took vacations and, you know, we had to come to the next meeting. And then the contracts become effective at the beginning of the fiscal year. So application, it's, it's, it's pretty thorough in what we ask them to provide. They have to give a complete form, uh, they have to show an event budget with revenues and expenditures. Uh, and also highlighting on those uh, expenditures where the hot funds reimbursement will be implied, applied. Uh, and then they need to show hotel room nights generated for the most recent event or season prior to the current application period. There's a number of ways that we can uh, accept that. Some of the gold standards especially are a hotel special rate or a room block report. Uh, or it could be a letter, um, or email from hotel management staff. You know, we take that, you know, documentation uh, very strongly. But it can also be questionnaires and surveys from event participants. This is kind of in the same vein, check-in forms and guest books. And then, you know, they do need to provide IRS tax exempt certificate if applicable, which I'll explain that in a minute. Notes on hotel room not tracking, they can't submit multiple forms. So if they have a, um, I'm just gonna speak hypothetically, a special rate report from the Hilton Garden Inn saying they had, you know, thirty room nights there, and then they have a, a survey saying, you know, sixty room nights. They can't say, well, I have ninety room nights, you know? They've got to pick the one um, uh, that, uh, you know, so there's no chance of double dipping that sort of thing. And uh, they must submit the documentation, you know, if they're, if they're doing surveys, they need to submit the surveys to us. They can't just type in, you know, we had a hundred rooms from the, the surveys, you know? They suppo, they supply those with us. And then, um, they can't count hotel room nights um, for uh, of for rooms that the organization or event may have paid for, right? If you have an event and you have a, a awardee and they, they are bringing in guest artists or something like that, and of course they're going to pay for their hotel room and it's thirty room nights. Well, that artist wouldn't have came if they hadn't paid for the room. It's not like they're bringing business to town necessarily, right? It's got to be people who are coming to Victoria on their own dime, who are willing to stay here, spend money in hotels. That of course means money in restaurants and gas and all those kind of things. So we require that of them as well, is that they have to show, um, you know, room nights that they did not themselves pay for. So how do we score the applicants? Um, a few years ago, we changed the process and, and we're getting better with it every year. And I think this year it's, it's very well tuned, the program. We started moving about a couple of years ago when the CVB took over the program to um, real objective evidence, so you know, really objective scoring. So the first part of it uh, is that the funds are distributed based on if they hit these four markers. So attending a workshop and we give them plenty of opportunities to do so. Document compliance, so turning in all their forms, everything that they need to. Credibility and credibility and transparency. So the budget needs to be a professional budget, not just some scribbled down numbers scribbled down on a piece of paper. As well as what they highlight uh, in that budget for reimbursement needs to uh, equal what they ask for, right? We don't want to see them asking for ten thousand dollars and then they highlight five thousand dollars worth of expenses. It just shows that they're taking the time to go through the documentation. They're taking it seriously and they're, you know, showing us what they're going to use that money on. And then the last one is utilization of prior award. You know, with the new program, it's, this is not so much of a concern. But in the past, we'd have awardees who just didn't do their event. Or they didn't turn in their documentation, because they just, you know, didn't have the time to put it together. The thing about the hot funds awards program is when an awardee doesn't do their event or doesn't turn in their post-event report and get their reimbursement, that money isn't distributed among the other awardees. It goes back to the hot funds pool, pot, right? Because y'all, when y'all, when city council, you know, approves the award amounts for everybody, that's done via resolution. We, every time somebody doesn't have their event, we can't keep coming back to y'all with resolutions, right? So that's money that could have been, that was lost, that could have been used by another awardee that was, you know, having their event, putting forth that effort. Uh, so we want to keep them honest about that. And I will say, I'll talk about the new program and how we changed it last year and how successful it's been. That's not so much of a concern anymore, but in the past, we had folks who would, would do that. Oh, I'm sorry. And then part two, uh, distribution of funds based on hotel room night impact. Um, so notes on the former system, uh, we changed it, you know, last summer. Usually no applicant was turned down, right? There was no requirement to prove room nights for events or seasons prior to the application period. What that led to was a record twenty-seven awardees in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-three program. Really watered things down. I attribute that growth especially to the fact that the program was switched to management by the CVB from the legal department. We're a very outwardly facing organization. Meet a lot of folks and a lot of different event organizers. By that nature, they're going to learn about hot funds and with the way the program was, we just had a glut really of, of applicants and awardees. With that, the median award amount dropped from about seventy-five hundred to less than forty-five hundred. There was real concern from council at the time that the way we had the program set up, that it was gonna start becoming not worth these people's time. You know, it's not going to be awarding them an amount that really makes a difference for them. And y'all asked us to come up with a new plan, which we did last summer. What we did was split the program up into two separate groups. So we had, I wish I had a flashier name for it, but I just called it Group One. It, uh, these are events. And the percentage that we came to uh, with that program last year was that of the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar pot that we had for hot funds, sixty-five percent of it went to this group. These folks could be uh, nonprofit or for-profit. Again, they must be able to pr, pr, provide room, approve room nights, excuse me. About of that sixty-five percent of the hundred and thirty-five thousand, seventy- seventy percent of it was evenly distributed between the groups. And then thirty percent of that was distributed based on room nights. And the limiting factor, what I like to call in here is that only the top ten room night generators are eligible. So there were a few folks, a few applicants who were not awarded last year. It was tough, you know, killing a few, including a few folks who had been awarded for several years before, prior with the old program. But this really awarded, awarded the people, rewarded the people who in groups who produce the room nights. And then Group Two. As we were developing the program, one of the things we wanted to account for is that groups like arts and historic preservation, the cultural groups, perhaps they don't produce as much in room nights. But they are here year round doing exhibits, events. You know, a golf tournament is great for economic impact, but they're here for three or four days, right? And they'll, of course, a golf tournament probably by its nature is going to have more room nights. So we carved a little piece out in the program for these groups as well. Now, there's some limiting factors in here that make it a little different. They have to be a registered nonprofit. They have to be an organization whose primary goal is to advance arts or historic preservation. They have to have a minimum of two events or exhibits or operate on a continual basis like a museum. They have to be able to prove room nights for the most recent event or season, just like Group One. And then again, just like with Group One, seventy percent of those, of that thirty five percent of the hundred and thirty five thousand was evenly distributed by the, all of them hitting those four markers I mentioned earlier. And then thirty percent of that was distributed based on their respective share of the room nights. So in short, it was successful last year. The awardees were reduced from twenty seven to seventeen. You can see the average award amount for Group One was eighty seven seventy five. The average award amount for Group Two was sixty seven fifty. It's an amount that's much better, more helpful for them. They have a proven, these awardees have proven room nights, so we're not going to run into an issue of, you know, them having, being an awardee who's maybe coming up with a new event, something like that. And low and behold, they don't produce room nights, creates an awkward situation there. And it still carves a little space out for the arts and historic preservation while rewarding proportionately, appropriately, the folks who are producing most, the most room nights. Some things that were part of the program that were recommended by city staff. Any event that's part of a multi-sport event like TAF Winter Games, that's ineligible to apply because we're already spending quite a bit of hot funds on bringing that group here. You know, the tournament organizers are getting the benefit of being a part of a city group that we're already paying funds to, you know, promote and make, make big and successful. And then the subcommittee recommended these changes, which we implemented, were room night tracking. Surveys, questionnaires could not be obtained earlier than the date of the events prior. Some groups were using, you know, ticket sales, you know, somebody buys a ticket three weeks, three months before a show. And there's a question and they're saying, are you staying in a hotel? Well, that person may come to Victoria and go back home or stay with family and friends. So it's a little bit more accurate of information and that's what they wanted to see and that's what we implemented. The post event report is very similar to the application, that they complete a post event report form, how the event turned out budget wise, how the, how many hotel room nights they generated. For their reimbursement, they need to prove, prove proof of payment, so invoices, receipts, contracts for expenses. And then a proof of payment like a canceled check or bank statement line item. And then finally, a marketing example, recovering, recognizing Discover Victoria, Texas. And again, the awardees are paid in funds after the season. And or event, and the post event report has been submitted and approved and there's a system of checks. I look at it, finance reviews it. Everybody's in agreement and they, we process the paperwork for their payment. So what we are planning for this current season is to not change the program. It's been very successful. The feedback we get in the workshops is that everyone likes it. They like the objective scoring. And it makes a process very painless for, you know, you counsel when it's time to approve it. And there's not a, you know, stream of people coming up to talk about it. I mean, it's, it's very objective and it's a very fair process. So we appreciate all y'all's guidance as we developed it. It's something I'm particularly proud of for our department. And I think it's a great thing for, for all our tourism partners. And I can answer any questions right now.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, you guys have tweaked those criteria in that program and I think it's been for the better. I think it's a, it's a better program than we've had and appreciate the work that y'all have put in on it. Because I, I think you have improved the process without a doubt, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing the heavy lifting.
Any questions, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Joel. Appreciate you.
I gotta come over here because they keep the clicker over here. Well, real quickly, I'm going to go through the pay program. So here's sort of my disclaimer on this. You've heard it all. There is one piece of information in this entire presentation you haven't heard yet. And it is the seventy five percent option that you asked for last meeting. And so I'm not going to provide anything new. I'm going to sort of lay out and recap what we've been through. And then hopefully we can go into some discussion where you help us decide what you'd like to see on August sixth and we bring you a proposed budget. Real quickly, I want to reestablish the economic challenges that we face. We know about inflation, right? The prices of everything go up. Just ask the guys at the water treatment plant and the chemical companies, right? Or every one of our departments who had to budget a software subscription this year. Or anything that we've built and have to maintain, right? We know we've seen the prices go up. The challenge is how do you continue providing the same services when the prices go up? And raising salaries to reach a competitive level at the same time? And knowing that for things with inflation, the biggest challenge for us with inflation, aside from the expense side, is on the revenue side. When the cost of milk, eggs, non-prepared foods goes up, those things aren't charged sales tax. But it reduces the amount of disposable income in the community that can then be used for sales tax. That's the biggest challenge with the inflation on the revenue side. Interest rates have an effect on our housing market and our property values. The number of people who could buy a three hundred thousand dollar house five years ago is dramatically lower, or was dramatically higher than it is today, right? Because at a three percent interest rate, that mortgage payment is a lot different than at a seven percent interest rate. And supply and demand says when there's less demand for a product, the price of that product goes down, which is what we anticipate or should see. And it is worth noting that as we went into budget preparation, as we started developing the pay plan, play plan, pay plan that we've, that we've been talking about for so long, we anticipated seeing a decrease in our overall property values, right, through the appraisal district. That's, that's worth noting that we were, we were sort of looking at that as an eventuality, right? And you heard from some of the folks in Citizens comments that we have seen increases in appraised values. We have seen increases in property tax revenue over the last several years. And so when that shifts, when that changes with interest rates and the housing market, the effect that happens with, that will change the way we have to plan and do business, right? All of that is largely because of a lack of growth. We've talked to you a lot about S B two, right? And the reduction from the eight percent rollback rate to the three and a half percent rollback rate. And the reality that, yes, we may hit that and we have hit that in our last several years and had to reduce the property tax rate just to collect that, that three and a half percent level, right? New growth is exempt from that three and a half percent level. So we can tax new growth at the rate that it should be taxed as opposed to keeping it under that three and a half percent. In the absence of new growth, we're left with trying to keep up with the inflationary prices, trying to keep up with wage increases, trying to honor the step plans of our first responders, trying to do all of those things on existing property values, on sales tax values that are beginning to decline because of inflation, right? So all of those things create challenges that really make it hard to do this and in some cases harder than it would be if we were in a fast growing community, right? And we've talked about our problem statement then. As a city, how do we reduce turnover and fill the vacancies in our organization? We identified early on that there are three components that seem to be affecting why people tell us they're leaving the city. Okay, that's often done in some of our exit interviews and some of the other conversations we have with people as they leave. People identify in wages, health insurance and retirement. We immediately started doing what we could to improve the pay programs. We capitalized on the growth we were seeing in appraisals. And we had several series of increases aimed at hitting compensation levels identified in the, in the twenty twenty compensation study that we've updated this year. Additionally, with our health plan, we are self insured, right? So I want to acknowledge that and what that means. So being self insured does not mean that we are our own insurance company. It does not mean that we set the rates or the premiums that the employees and the city pays. What it means is that we are alone in funding our liabilities. If we were in a risk pool, the opposite of being self insured and some other city or, or organization in that risk pool didn't spend all of the money in their premiums, we could use that on the overages. That is not the case when we're self insured, right? So I think there's, that self insured title implies more control than, than we actually have. And so what we did is we worked with Lockton, a new benefits administrator that we procured in twenty twenty to improve our benefits program. We entered into a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield and we made changes. Now, in that time since twenty twenty, we've made those changes. It is not the case that there have not been increases to the cost of our benefits. It is the case that the employees have not seen the increases to the cost of those benefits. The city has eaten those costs every year that they've happened. Again, being self insured, it's not us setting the rates, but the city's covering those costs that Blue Cross Blue Shield and the other providers are giving us through those. When I say other providers, I mean Delta Dental, the Vision, all the other insurance packages, right, that we offer. Now, that is important to know because in twenty twenty five, our contract that we negotiated with in twenty twenty will end with Blue Cross Blue Shield. As we've seen with every other contract and every other service that we do, we would anticipate the price of that contract to go up. While we have the opportunity and we're under the current contract and we've got some favorable conditions, we have heard from employees, they don't like being limited to simply a high deductible health plan. High deductible health plans were originally called consumer driven plans because the thought was you pay for everything up until the deductible and you're more likely to make the decisions, make the best economic decisions for your benefit plan, right? And so we have two high deductible health plan options that are very similar. And our employees are split about evenly between the use of those two plans. The difference is the way that one covers the family versus not. One is more of an individual deductible where every member of the family has to hit the deductible before you, before it starts to pay out. The other is where your family members collectively arrive at the deductible, right? In fiscal twenty twenty five, it is our intention to offer a third plan that is more traditional, is an E P O, an exclusive provider option. And it will be more expensive as far as employee premiums go and city premiums go. But it is not as substantial of an increase as we would expect. But it does offer more traditional copays and other things. And so the employees will receive all of that information as we prepare for open enrollment, the same way we do with benefits every year. But we want to take advantage of the time while we're under our Blue Cross Blue Shield contract that we've had for a while to be able to update those options and provide our employees with an alternative to the high deductible health plan. It is not for everyone. Some people will decide that the premiums aren't worth it. And some people will decide that the more traditional coverage is worth the increase in premiums. So I just want to bring that up because I want to make sure that we talk through what our plans are for addressing health benefits and things. So that leaves the two other components that we have spent a significant amount of time talking with you about and talking with the employees about, wages and retirement. Now, we did the twenty twenty four compensation study, which is an update to the twenty twenty compensation study. We expanded the list of cities from the twenty twenty compensation study, including several that were brought to us by some of the associations that have been in police and fire. It is worth noting that every single one of those cities, with the exception of maybe Bay City on that list, is growing faster than we are. They have a tax base that is benefiting from that new construction piece I mentioned a minute ago, right? Where they're getting the full tax value on that. They're not capped at that three and a half percent of new construction. So the growth of those cities is important in that we will not keep up with their ability to pay the wages they're paying, which is why we're aiming for the ninety percent of market rate as opposed to trying to meet the market, right? The other thing that's worth noting is Victoria County is added on that list. We added Victoria County because we do lose, we have lost several police officers to the sheriff's office. It is worth noting, they, they receive about a third of the calls that our current, that our police officers receive. And in the past year, they received a grant from the state to increase the wages of their deputies. So essentially, Victoria County Sheriff's deputies are being paid to do less, being paid more to do less, right? So that's worth noting in our, in our compensation study. This compensation study evaluated a hundred and fifty nine positions. What that means is not a hundred and fifty nine people, it's a hundred and fifty nine positions, right? And we found that only about twenty of them fall inside of what we would consider a definition of competitive, right? The plan to bring everyone up to ninety percent of market that we've talked through requires a three point two million dollar cash infusion over the next two years, two fiscal years. There's a funding strategy that's been laid out. One is to indefinitely freeze ten vacant positions. We've talked about, we showed you the chart last council meeting that showed Public Works is the group that struggles the most with turnover and some of the positions that we just aren't able to fill. And so freezing those positions may allow us some opportunity to do some additional things. We will decrease one time expenditures in fiscal year twenty five. I want to make sure that we note though, that decreasing one time fiscal, one time expenditures in fiscal year twenty twenty five is not a solution to recurring salary expenses, right? It is a strategy for the coming year in able to, in order to allow us the chance to pursue growth opportunities and to find what may come in fiscal year twenty six, right? But it is a one time, it is a one time strategy that we can employ this year, right? So there are a couple of things. We're leasing fewer vehicles. We're not approving some of the one time requests that we received in the, in the budget cycle this year. It is not a recurring strategy. It is a one time strategy, right? Then we will go into the T M R S changes, meaning the updated service credit and the non retroactive COLA. And then additionally, we will increase some of our sales tax revenue risk. What that means is we have traditionally budgeted very conservatively our sales tax revenues and we always come in way over in that category. We're going to get a little closer to the line this year. That's risky because of inflation and all the things we talked about with disposable income earlier, right, in the absence of growth. So before I jump into what the options look like, do you have any other, any questions on anything so far? Okay. All right, so the, the original proposal, remember, we talked about a three point two million dollar need, right? Would be that we add a five percent across the board raise to police and fire. Folks that are in their step program. And that will also honor the one point five percent step if applicable. So police and fire achieve a new step about every two years of service. So if you happen to be a policeman or a fireman who is coming up on the step this year, you would receive the five percent plus the step, right? And then to all civilian employees, we would give a three percent across the board raise. Importantly, as a government entity, right, it just doesn't look or have the right feel when we have employees that also are eligible for government services. So we are working to bring our minimum wage up above that threshold, right? So establishing a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage for the city is an important step in this, in this year. We'd also explore a new certification pay for Public Works and Environmental Services folks as they have C D Ls and other licenses like we've talked about with our operators, right? But we don't have the funding for that accounted for, so we want to make sure that's exploration. Going forward into next year, next year would be the, the fiscal twenty six would be where we would achieve that, that ninety percent of market, right? And that's another one, almost one and a half million dollars for some of the same kind of market adjustments that would go to. Um, and that's another one, almost one and a half million dollars uh for some of the same kind of market adjustments that would go to employee compensation by position. So that proposed funding strategy over the next two years does require the reduction of the updated service credit benefit from a hundred percent to fifty percent. Remember, this is not a change to the two to one contribution. It is not a change to our six percent. So withhold, employees have six percent withheld for retirement. We contribute twelve percent. It's not a change to any of that. It's also not a change to the seventy percent COLA. Our, our retirees will continue to receive the same seventy percent COLA, just in a non retroactive state going forward um that they would have received before. This plan reduces, um, so in the last year, we had to pay seventeen point nine percent of our payroll to TMRS. This plan, by reducing the updated service credit to the fifty percent, would reduce that cost to fourteen point two nine million. Uh, fourteen point two nine percent. And that would leave our unfunded liability at thirty million. Okay? And again, that produces the same effect that we talked about a minute ago, bringing everyone ninety percent of market, uh, three percent for general population or civilian pay. Public safety in the step program would be the five percent plus the step and then ninety percent of market and a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage. Now, the original alternative that we talked about last time was, and this is the uh alternative you've heard both associations um endorse, right? Is leaving retirement alone and everyone getting only the three percent across the board adjustment. Right? So the change that happens there is for public safety, they were, their adjust, their retire, their raise would be reduced to the three percent across the board with their one percent step increase, reaching an eighty seven percent of market in that same compensation group that we talked about. That leaves the updated service credit at a hundred percent. It increases our TMRS rate to seventeen point two four percent. And the unfunded liability that we face in that is thirty seven million dollars. Uh, again, the only change is on the raises to the public safety side. Right? A civilian, general population is still at the three percent piece. You asked us to look into between a hundred percent and fifty percent is seventy five percent. When we make that change, uh, we see no change to what we're able to afford to give to public safety in the, in the sense of raises. Uh, but we do reduce our TMRS rate down to fifteen point six percent. And the unfunded liability is reduced to thirty three million from thirty seven. Um, again, this may be something that can somewhat insulate us from future changes to TMRS rates and, and some of the things that we anticipate may come in twenty twenty seven. But it doesn't offer enough of a change to change what we're able to afford to pay in the form of raises, so. You have a comparison chart here. Um, the, the thing that is worth noting in this place is our confidence of being able to achieve fiscal year twenty twenty six goals. Remember, this is a, the pay program is a two year pay program. Our ability to do what we'd like to do in fiscal year twenty twenty six, under the proposed option, we feel comfortable that we can achieve that. Under the option that we've talked about with um leaving retirement alone, there is less certainty in what we will be able to do in twenty twenty six. In full disclosure that there's less certainty about what will happen in twenty twenty six across the board in terms of the economy and all those economic challenges we talked about before, right? The only thing that the first option gives us is a safety net or a security net that gives us a bigger gap between those increases and our recurring costs. And then in the alternative option with seventy five percent, it, although it doesn't afford us the ability to change what we would do between up, in terms of raises with alternative one and alternative two, um, it does give us somewhat more padding between potential increases in fiscal year twenty six. So it increases our confidence in the ability to fund the second year component of the pay program. So the only, the only new information is what comes from the seventy five percent option. Everything else is what you've heard before and I hope it came across almost as good as Jesus could have said it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The adopted, the proposed budget that's online, what does it actually, does it reflect, go back to the three things, does it reflect um, reducing anything? Or does it, is it a hundred percent? And is it the pay raises as proposed in the original plan or what does the budget reflect?
The proposed budget that you all saw in our budget workshop and the budget stories includes the fifty percent, the proposed recommended option, right?
How much money? What's the difference in money between the fifty and the hundred percent that we'd have to come up with to do the hundred percent? And do the five percent raises?
Wesley, do you know the?
There's a slide that Jesus showed us.
In his original presentation, there was.
I wanna say it was like eight hundred thousand the first year and four hundred thousand the next year.
But what I can tell you is this proposed option saves about one point two five million.
But it's over a period of time, right? How much does it save in the first year?
One point two five million is the first year. The, uh, the period is, the period of time is that it's recurring, right? So that rate going from seventeen point two four percent all the way back to um fourteen point six percent, that's that one point two five million that, that we have to work through. The option for the seventy five percent only saves around seven hundred thousand. That's why we aren't able to afford to increase raises because we can't do that across the board for the, it won't fund police and fire across the board that way.
So I, as I understand, Mr. Frill, what you're looking for this evening is a direction from council in terms of which one of these seems to be the most favorable to us at this point to plug into the budget? That those budget numbers would then come back to us to be shared uh for consideration as we go through our budgeting process. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So as Councilman Lofgren alluded to, the budget numbers that you have seen, the budget presentations you have seen include the proposed numbers. But when we come back on August sixth, it will help us tremendously to be able to give you a budget that's proposed based on the pay program you want us to build, right? Um, and Joel in his presentation a minute ago mentioned whenever actors or whenever the people at events bring out their guest stars. And so in that vein, I will tell you that Jesus is on a Zoom call. Um, and so he's available to answer some of your questions as the, uh, as the guest performer for this presentation, so.
I have a question. I'm looking at this, I, I recognize that each year we're looking to hit ninety percent. Um, but that market's gonna change. And so have we taken into account that change for us to hit ninety percent? And secondary to that, is that each rank? Because when I look at it, there's some disparity um, between say what a captain makes and what a initial um entry level position is. And it doesn't look like we're at ninety percent all the way across the board for all ranks.
The, uh, so the answer on the, does it keep up with the change? No, that's why we update the compensation study every few years, right? Um, I'm gonna be real honest with you and tell you the compensation study is based on a lagging indicator. When we survey cities, they tell us what they're paying now, not what they're going to pay next year, right? And then we're gonna spend two years trying to get to ninety percent of the market that's established by that study. From the rank question, it does take into account rank because it's based on a study by position. Um, so at each level, we evaluate what does a captain in those cities make compared to a captain here? What is the uh lieutenant in those cities make compared to lieutenant in those cities here, right? And so it, it, and you saw the table, I was trying to go back to it a minute ago. Um, you saw the table that sort of compares the sort of compares the, the number of positions. And so in that number, you might see that, you know, thirty eight of those positions are at ten to fifteen percent behind market. Um, some of those may be the captain positions, right, or some of the others. So it is a by position study.
I guess I'm having trouble with that because when I look at it, um, not this particular one that you've presented, but the twenty twenty that we were presented, it was sent to us. Looks like we're about negative thirty one percent behind. And so we would have to take that overall, when you take all of the different, um, all of the different rankings, we're about thirty one percent behind. And so in order to get to ninety percent, you would have to account for that plus whatever on top of that to get to the ninety percent. And so I'm concerned that we're gonna be chasing numbers um to get there with all of these other unexpected, just like you just indicated. Economic challenges are faced by everyone and I think our role as city council is to prioritize as good stewards um, based on what we anticipate it might be. But as well as that um community feedback and we've heard from VPDM, the fire department where they stand, and I think we need to take that into consideration. Um, I would ask Wesley, if we did not do this, is there money in the budget to allow for the three percent that those departments are saying they would be okay with?
Yes, each of the options we presented, we, we would be able to fund.
So I have a couple of comments I just wanna share, I guess, on, first of all, I wanna say thanks to the city manager's office and Wesley and Gilbert and finance team uh for, there has been a lot of work and a lot of hours and a lot of, well, what about this question or what about that question and going back and re-crenching numbers and going back through that? Um, and I know that, that all of y'all have put a lot of time into this and we certainly appreciate it. Um, I think everyone up here recognizes um from our study that um we're behind and not just for police and fire. You know, our, our role is not just to cater to one group within the city, but we have to keep in mind all of the city employees. Uh, and we recognize that we're behind, I think, across the board, you know? Um, quite honestly, of the three options that are out there, I don't like any of them. But this is where we are. Uh, you know, this is a difficult decision uh, uh, that quite honestly, you know, there, there's, there's no great outcome that's gonna come out of this because uh our options are, are fairly limited and, and fairly dismal. Um, I, I will echo something you said, Mr. Frill, that I think is important. You know, when we all, I think we all went into this process thinking, hey, we wanna try to, we wanna try to give raises where we can. How can we do that? What can we do? When we started this process, we were hearing from the appraisal district that um your, your revenues are gonna be down two percent. Couple of weeks later, it's three percent. Couple of weeks later, it's four percent. You know, at that point, a little bit of panic set in. I'm not gonna lie to you in terms of, you know, how are we gonna keep the ship afloat? How are we gonna try to meet these raises? We wanna try to do this. Um, and that's where I think that initial um proposal came from was this is a way that, that we can do that. Um, based on what we were hearing then. Um, following that, I know several of us have had various discussions, certainly discussions with city management, with the finance department, talked with staff, talked with representatives of PD and fire department about, hey, here's the options that are out there. Here's what we're hearing on, on revenues. Give us some feedback. Uh, to your point, Ms. Butler, you know, we, we, I think all of us wanted to get feedback about, hey, wh- what, what can we support? What do you guys, uh, where your, where are your priorities in this so that we can consider that? Now, obviously, our job is not to say, well, what do the employees want and give it to them. Our job is to say, what is the best thing for the city overall as a whole? Um, a- and, and we have to prioritize and make some, make some difficult decisions. Uh, certainly, I think the goal of ninety percent of market um is what we're all, we're all shooting for here. Um, but through that process, we did ask for alternative option one and then in the last meeting, I asked for the alternative option two. I say all that just to say that we, during this process where we're considering grinding over these numbers, thinking about what are the implications of this, not just this year, but the next year or the year after, um, the numbers that we got from the appraisal district changed or that we received from the appraisal district changed. All of a sudden, um, I don't know if they found a, a magic bean or a better pencil or what happened there, but you know, those numbers start looking much more favorable. Um, and so given that, I think that factored into, hey, let's look at some of these alternatives. Let's, let's, let's see what we can do there. Um, I think Mr. Mr. Garza had expressed to us and rightfully so, concerned about the TMRS rate. Um, I, I don't think any of us can pretend that that rate's not going to go up. It absolutely is, just based on what we know. I mean, the economy and everything else that's involved. Um, and I know that that's gonna be a concern. From my standpoint, going back and looking at these different options, the, the initial proposed option looked like a had to at the time because of where we were, what those numbers looked like. Those numbers change and I think now we have some alternatives that have come forward. Um, my position on this and my thoughts on this, and of course, I want everyone to share, is that, you know, I haven't wanted to impact retirement unless we had to, okay? Um, I know that um, that um, the proposed, uh, the initial proposed plan um would do that. And in seeing the alternative option one, if we did uh leave it at a hundred percent, although while we couldn't necessarily give as good a raises as we could, we could still meet the three percent across the board. Um, I, from my standpoint, based on the, the numbers that we received, um, I don't wanna touch retirement until we have to and I don't know that we have to right now. Um, are we going to have to? Possibly. Are we going to have to? Maybe, probably. Um, but that's, that's, that's next year and possibly the year after. Um, I think, um, we're gonna have to relook at that at some point. Um, but I, I think di- dipping into or, or reducing that um, um, updated service credit, I think at this point would be what I would kinda consider my Alamo, if you will. Going back to, hey, this is, I, I'm, I'm only gonna do this if we have to do what we can do. What I've heard, um, or what I'm seeing is that we can still give the raises that we wanted to give. They may not be the five percent or the six percent that we talked about. Uh, but we can do three percent across the board and not touch the um, uh, updated service credit at this time. Now, we may be right back here next year talking about this same thing because at that point, that may be where we have to do it. But I, you know, I, I don't want to get, I don't wanna do that until we get to the point that I feel like we have to do it. And I, I, I don't know that we're there right now, but I anticipate that we may be in the next year or two, so.
I don't like the impact on the TMRS rate if we don't do what the hard work has already gotten us to this point, if we don't just bite the bullet and do it. Um, I'm thinking not just about the, the citizens, everyone that's impacted by it, but I'm really thinking about the taxpayers because we don't just represent the city employees. We represent constituents. My constituents don't expect a three percent across the board raise this year. They didn't get one last year. They don't expect one every single year. They don't have two to one matches on a six percent on a retirement account. Um, they're, they don't expect a big bonus. And the, uh, the ones that understand what the updated service credit is all about are shocked. The retroactiveness of it. It's, it's just a very wonderful benefit of being a municipal employee, which not everybody can be. But I've got to look at who we're asking to pay for it. Those people that are asking, that have been asking me for nine years to get Tanglewood paved and I finally got to approve it today. Thank you for letting me make that motion. They want their roads paved. They want our city finances to be healthy so that they're not. so that they're not looking at potential increases in their taxes every year. And in terms of property values, I serve on the appraisal district board, and the number of protests continues to rise. We have, I think we had nine thousand protests. So, so the fact of where, we don't really know where our tax base value is going to end up, but it's going to continue to be in flux. I, I just, I really feel, I certainly want to give everybody raises. I certainly don't want to hurt individuals, but Mr. Garza told us, think about positions, not people. But if I think about people, I have to think about my taxpayers as well. And I just wanted to say all that.
Well, oh, go ahead.
No, you first.
I was going to say, besides the answer of a lot more money, and it's unfortunate that we can't do a grandfather TRMS system. I've oscillated back and forth in these arguments, and they've been good arguments. And I respect what city management, finance, HR, in both the police and fire, and their discussions. I don't feel good about cutting. And I understand, Ms. Scott, what you alluded to, but I do know that you're talking, so you have taxpayers and we're representing them. But along with that, that's also in the, the private sector. The public sector does take a little bit of a hit, and we can see with their wages that are, that are lower compared to market. We expect safety from our police, and we expect safety from our fire. And we've made a commitment, I believe, in, in what their retirement package is, and they're willing to take actually less wage to, to maintain that, as they've come up here as two bodies and said that. And, you know, my, personally, I may put wages above certain things, but I'm listening to them. And we may have to come by it back and, and have another discussion, but, but right now, I'm for alternative option number one. I don't feel good about it, but I think that's the best.
I'm also, I'm also for that. I don't want to touch retirement. And like the mayor said, we may have to in the next budget. Unless we have growth, I would like, the whole plan is to reduce turnover and vacancies. And I'd like to know more specifically where the, like in the police department, it's my understanding, it's a lot of it are senior patrol officers. And I'm not for this. If that's where the turnover is, that's where the focus on wages needs to be. If in fire, it's in a certain place, that's where the focus on wages needs to be. It doesn't need to be an across-the-board thing. This is supposed to be about fixing vacancies and turnover. So where's the turnover? And then, I, you know, I understand that everybody should get a raise. But some positions that we can't fill, they demand more money, and that money should be taken from the other people that are going to get the raise. They still should get a raise, don't get me wrong. In fact, I'd love to give you five, ten percent raise. The money's not there. But I would like to know, in police, where the turnover is, I'd like to know in fire where the turnover is. And, and not just where it is, but why it happens. For example, I understand in fire, a lot of it is that people get a job closer to home, because we have a lot of firemen that don't live in the, in the county. They drive in, so they get a job closer to home. Now, what positions do we lose in the fire department? So I just, I don't want to just cross, raise everybody a certain amount. I want some of the money to go, get targeted to where the vacancies and the turnover is. I mean, if you run a company, you may have to pay more to fill certain positions. You just don't give everybody a raise and hope you're going to fill those positions. So that's something we all need to know up here, where the turnover is and why. Not just where it is, but why it happens, because, now, the reason, I don't want to change retirement benefits. That's, that's something that we should talk up, even when we're trying to hire people, because we have good retirement benefits. And taking from one and putting the other doesn't accomplish anything if you want to stay here for long term. But we need to know the reasons where and why people are leaving.
So to kind of comment on some of that, you know, I know we talked a little bit about some of the data that we have available related to just people in and out, right, and not necessarily the why, but who, right? And it is what you might expect, right? At lower levels in the organization, there are higher degrees of turnover than at higher levels in the organization, right? Now, that has a bit of a ripple effect in the sense that, that may help explain why, right? When I want to, when I'm a police officer, and I want to promote to senior police officer, that's just a matter of time, right? But then when I want to promote from senior police officer to sergeant, and sergeant to lieutenant, lieutenant to captain, the number of those positions gets fewer and fewer. And we know that the turnover at those positions, once people are in those positions, they hold on to them longer, right? And so those openings may come elsewhere, in another city or in another place, quicker than they come here, right? Or they may, that opportunity may arise somewhere else. The fact that that somewhere else may pay more than we do does tend to happen, right? It is my belief, and has been for a long time, that people begin looking for those opportunities, either when they're ready to move up and that opportunity doesn't exist where they're at, or something else has caused them to want to seek else, seek employment elsewhere, whether that's a lack of resources, something with their supervisor, or just general unhappiness, or a change in their family dynamic, right? They need to make more money. But at the same time, and Jesus mentioned this in the last presentation, in the police and fire department, they're on a career path from the moment they walk in the door, right? The goal is constantly promote by rank. In our other departments, at some level, it's more of just a job, right? If you're just filling potholes, very few of the guys that start as a meter reader or in those lower public works type of jobs are aiming to be the director one day, right? And few will work themselves up to that spot. And so they literally can, we compete with, to hold on to them against every other job in the world. They could go do anything else that they might feel passionate about, right? And so the challenge is sort of different for police and fire versus holding on to people in the civilian departments. But where or who, it is at the lower levels, because there are more of them and fewer opportunities to move up. And in, you mentioned kind of in fire, in the same vein, we have a forty-eight, ninety-six schedule. So a number of those guys commute in. And sometimes, they may find a higher-paying job, but it's also fifteen minutes from their house, as opposed to two hours that they might drive in, right? And so there's, it's hard to argue with those things. But at lower levels and more opportunity, sometimes greater pay plays a role in that. But, you know, we have exit interviews, we have some things that aren't necessarily written as data that have alluded to those things, but they always, always allude to something else, too. Some other level of dissatisfaction, so.
If you go to other city websites, for example, San Marcos or those, there's always, they want to hire senior police officers, they'll give them a bonus, okay? So obviously, that's an area where there's turnover in, in our department. That turns over, then we fill them up with new people, they get trained and they leave. My point is, more money needs to be directed there than to the chief of police or the whatever. And I'm not saying they shouldn't get a raise, okay? Please don't tackle me when we leave, okay? But I'd like to see the money directed to where we have the turnover. And I, when I looked at the plan, it didn't seem that way, when I saw the actual things. So all I'm saying is, I would like to see more money directed at those areas. Everybody else should get a raise, but maybe not as much. That's just my point. The whole object is about turnover and vacancies. So we should identify those positions and try and target them.
What other comment, please?
I'll go ahead and go next. Because of the lack of, of a better option, and right now, the association, firefighters and police associations have more or less agreed that option one, alternative option one, is best. For me, it needs to be a hundred percent across the board on the, on the updated service credit. Do not touch retirement at all in any shape, form, or fashion. Across the board, five percent, and one percent after that. Forever, since nineteen seventy-six, I've been involved with the city. And the, that's when I was employed. The public safety departments have always been put second or last. The budget's determined, and after the budget is determined, then they figure out how much want to go to streets, how much want to go to everything else, how much needs to be budgeted for every other department. And then they sit back and they look at, well, what do we want to give the police officers, firefighters, and paramedics? We need to reverse that. We need to do this first. We are in a bind, it's getting worse and worse and worse. And if we keep worrying about everything else first, instead of our public safety first, these shortages are going to cause a lot of issues with, with the citizens of Victoria, with our safety, with, with fire protection, with police protection. It's affecting us now. Every citizen in Victoria is affected by our police force. Every citizen, from the time they can pick up a cell phone and dial nine-one-one, which is age three or four, when they dial nine-one-one, they want fire protection there. They want somebody to come resuscitate their father or, or mother. Not everybody lives in Tanglewood and is going to worry about the Tanglewood, the streets in Tanglewood. Not everyone is going to worry about the discrepancy in, 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 the vacancies in certain positions, because I've talked to plenty of, of police officers. When some police officers have been here twenty years and are a step higher than other police officers who've been here two years, and they're making almost the same amount, that's an issue, a big issue. That's why they leave. We need to worry about putting the public safety first, worry about getting them paid first. Then we go back and we adjust the budget. If we have to cut out a CIP project, oh, well, we have to cut out a CIP project. It's not just about every single, a, a, a couple of taxpayers. It's about every person in the city of Victoria that can pick up a phone and can call nine-one-one and want and need the protection that they're crying out for right away. A response time of fifteen minutes to twenty minutes for an ambulance or a fire department is happening because of lack of, of, of personnel and a lack of equipment. That's got to stop. That's got to stop. We've got to put our public safety personnel first. I understand we have other employees, but every person in the city of Victoria has the opportunity to go to a police academy and become a police officer and make the pay that these police officers get paid. When a police officer who leaves the house in the morning, they kiss their wife goodbye and they say, I love you. Why? Because they may not come home. They may not come home. Someone, some idiot's going to take a pop shot at them. Firefighters, they don't know when they get to a call, if there's going to be an explosion, a fire, EMS personnel. They don't know if they're going to come home either. These are different careers, different occupations than every other career or every other occupation that city has. And putting them last or putting them second after the budget's already been determined, that's been going on since nineteen seventy-six. That's why we're in this bind today. That's how come we're in this issue. It's time we change. It's time we put the firefighters, paramedics, police officers first. They're the ones that every single person in Victoria is going to call when there's an emergency. Not everybody needs water department all the time or parks department all the time, but yes, they need a raise, too, but our employees in public safety need to be thought of first before we, we, we come up with a budget. That's my opinion, but after forty-something years of, almost fifty years of always seeing the public safety officers being put second, it gets old, it gets tired, it's tiring. It's always second, they're second, they're second. No, they're not, they're first. That's my opinion.
Just to be clear, I want to make sure I understand your recommendation is alternative option one, without touching the retirement, but with the public safety program raise.
Across the board to five percent.
Yes, sir.
But I understand that it may not happen at five percent, but we cannot touch the retirement. That's the only thing that's keeping some of these employees here.
That was going to be my next question. Between the five percent raise and the, and the touch the retirement, which were your priority, which of those you prioritize? So it sounds like prioritize.
There's no priority, they're, they're both priorities.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
If you're looking for a sense of the council, I think that keeping the retirement at a hundred percent seems to be, certainly, it's on my mind, and I, I notice, I don't know why I didn't notice it last time, but I noticed this time that the way you're going to fund that hundred percent is by firing police, reducing their, what would be their pay raise by two percent. So, you know, and, and I know the market rate comes down a little bit also. So that's a long way of saying I'm, I'm in favor of alternative option one as well.
And just to be clear, on the funding hundred percent versus not, we're already funding the hundred percent. The thing that, the thing that, the reduction from the hundred percent to fifty percent, the only thing that that achieves is giving the additional two percent raise to police and fire in the STEP program, right? So the backwards of that, so we're not using, we're not taking away a, a potential raise from the policeman to fund the hundred percent. It was sort of the opposite.
Right.
But we can't fund the additional two percent without, and add to, at the hundred percent, based on the models we have today, so.
Right.
I'm, I am absolutely opposed to touching retirement for, for this. I think that there are, there are valid points that were made by other council members regarding roads and regarding vacancies. But I couldn't align more with what council member Delagarsa has stated. Our, our citizens want public safety, and we don't want to do anything that would impact how those that are serving now feel about serving and change their wanting to be here. And I think that Mayor Crocker said it best with the Alamo. I think this is our silver bullet, if you will, and we shouldn't use a silver bullet until the werewolf is knocking on the door. We need to protect and uphold our commitment to our public safety employees. And touching retirement does not do that. So I'm completely opposed to it. I say that we do what they have offered so valiantly, which is three percent across the board and not touching the retirement. But I also stand with Councilman Delagarsa in saying we should challenge ourselves to figure out a way to look at the budget with different eyes.
And I'll add to that, I mean, I would say I think the consensus is, let's look at alternative option one going forward on the, on the budget numbers that come in. You know, again, I'll stress, this is a, this is a decision made at this point in time that is not set in stone from now forever, because at some point, we may very well be back here looking at the same thing. I think, I think what I, what I hope it drives home for all of us is the importance of growth within the city and growth to the city. You know, we're seeing the market driven by these cities that have experienced more growth than we have. Sometimes, you know, everybody talks about economic development. It, it is a verb, not just a noun, and, you know, it, it's important. And sometimes it takes, it takes a bad rap in terms of, well, this is just a bunch of, you know, trying to recruit and trying to do this and, and that sort of thing. But I, I think this discussion and this situation highlights the importance of that economic development plays in terms of helping a city to grow. And so I think, I think all of us, I hope,
And so, I think, I think all of us, I hope, have, understand the importance of it, and see this in a real-world setting and context, that that sort of work that people put in to try to drive growth has real benefits and real implications, not just to the citizens as a whole, but to the city and its ability to provide the services, provide fire and police protection, and those sort of things. So I think you have your answer, Mr. Farrell.
Yes, sir. And, you know, we really appreciate the time, the consideration you guys have spent thinking through, talking to, answering phone calls, emails, text messages, carrier pigeons, and people in the grocery store. But also, you know, we're grateful to the police and fire associations. They've spent a lot of time talking to their folks, their leadership, James, and Dustin, and Josu. And, you know, Mr. Pena, he installs statues whenever he's not running the association business. So he's gotten pretty good at that. But we're grateful for them engaging in the dialogue, having the conversation, sort of staying at it, both on, in keeping us informed, and engaging their folks, right? Not just saying, well, I'm the union president, I'll do this, right? They've had legitimate conversations, and they've put in some effort and time. And we're grateful to them for that. The other thing that I want to make sure we acknowledge is, we're grateful to the president of the district for staying on top of those preliminary numbers, and somehow making them come back at the increase, as opposed to the decrease on the revenues. I will reiterate that they finished all of their protest and give us the certified tax rolls on July 25. So until that time, nothing is set in stone. But, you know, we're grateful that we have shifted positions from where we were when we first started making these proposals and having these conversations. And so, for everybody that put their time in, in finance, in HR, in our office, for all of you, for all the citizens, for all of the association folks, and the both civilian and public safety employees that we heard from, we are grateful.
Very good. I understand, then, you have everything you need on this item, then? Nothing further?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand we do not have an executive session?
That's right.
And so, we are adjourned.